Good evening to everyone. Welcome to the March 15th City Council Meeting. Cheryl, would you do the roll call, please?
Council members Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Portem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
All present?
And we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Kevin Bash and then the invocation by Pastor Vernie Fletcher.
(inaudible) United States of America, and in your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good.
Good evening.
I'll let you all be seated because God will hear you while you're sitting down too. Okay? Yeah, you can go ahead and sit down.
(inaudible).
Yeah. John would stand. Yeah, it's gonna be a real long one. Well, I wrote a debate on what to say to you tonight because I'm retiring and this is gonna be probably the last time I get to ever be around here with you, which is kinda hard for me to be able even say, but...
Do you get permission from God?
Uh, he's been telling me for some time. Handwritten message.
(inaudible).
Yeah. Just get off the curb, Vernie. Well, Pastor Phil is here with me and he is going to be my replacement, not even replacement, really gonna be the pastor for change at a church. He's gonna up to any, so I just, you know, it's really nice. It's been really, really sweet to be able to be with you and get to know you and become good friends. I try to think of some kinda story and I always do and then everybody boos when I leave. It's okay. I can take the...I've been married for forty-nine years, so... There was a pastor who was pastor in church and he'd been pastoring this church about five years and his wife had a little box that she locked up and she asked him not to mess with it because it was private to her. Well, now that started bugging him. So he wanted to find out what was in the box. So she went out for supermarket or something and he decided he was gonna break in and see what's in that box. Little box. He opens it up and there's two eggs in there and a thousand dollars. He shuts the lid and waits. She get home. She came home and she noticed that he'd been messing with that box. So she asked him, "Now, what are you gonna do as a pastor? You can't really lie to your wife because God's listening." So he said, "Yeah, I opened it." And I'm curious to understand how come there's a thousand dollars in there? Because we don't have a lot of money and there's two eggs. He said, "I made a promise to God that when you came here to pastor this church, every time you preached a dud..." Yeah, some of you don't understand. "...I would put an egg in the box." And he went, "All right, five years, two eggs. That's not bad. That's really good." She said, "Well, what's a thousand dollars in there for?" "Every time I got a dozen, I sold them." So it's kinda like what you get here every time I dud. So it has been a real honor to be a part of your lives and to be around all the time in a really precious time to me. And I just wanna thank you for being so gracious. Berwin, every time I say we're gonna take an offering, he jerked his hat off. And, you know, he thinks he's gonna get a cut, but we can't do that. But let me pray with you and I'll let you go and you can do your meeting tonight. Really appreciate you guys. Love you guys. Heavenly Father, it has been an honor to me, a privilege to me, to be able to come here and to be able to represent you in a little way to say, "We do love you, God. We do love your son, Jesus Christ. And we thank you for all that you've given to us because everything we have, you've given to us." Sometimes we think we earned it, but the ability to do it has been given to us by you. All of us have had different gifts. Some are very, very smart, some not so smart. It's different. But God says, "Just be faithful with what you have and remember, I gave it to you." I really do thank you again for the privilege to come here tonight to be able to pray for this mayor, the city councilman, the city, people who work for us have done such a great job. I just pray for them, that you give them wisdom tonight to handle their decisions that they're gonna make. And I pray you don't let the door hit me on the way out. And just thank you, Father, for all you do. In Jesus' name, amen. God bless you. Don't go away. Well, that's a new one.
Stand back.
Thank God he's done.
Well, just a couple of things, but I'm gonna ask council to come down to the podium also. But my question, and I'm gonna keep asking you, is the question for the ages, which I'd like an answer for, and that is, stairway to heaven or highway to hell?
Well, we're kinda partial, aren't we?
I'm waiting for an answer.
Okay. I'll get right back to you. Email. I don't know what I did wrong, but I'm okay.
Come on over on your side.
By some good people.
So we're gonna share the wealth here. If each council person would please read two "Whereas's." Berwin, you wanna start?
Whereas, he's getting out of town.
Whereas, born in the city of Cement, Oklahoma. That's a slab, that's not a city. What'd they raise, watermelons? Vernie W. Fletcher and his family moved to California a few years later, settling in the city of Tulare. Vernie attended Tulare Union High School, graduating in 1967, where he lettered and wrestling all four years. And whereas, Vernie Fletcher was drafted into the Army in 1969. During his tour of duty, he was deployed to Vietnam where he was wounded by a Ponji stake to his leg. Then finishing his two-year service at Fort Hood, Texas, Vernie is a Purple Heart recipient and also received the Vietnam Service Medal with one Brown's Service Star, the Nation Defense Service Medal, Expert Rifle Medal, and the Good Conduct Award, and...
It's kinda funny, when Vernie got his Purple Heart, it took Congressman Calvert to do it and Kathy and I, we snuck up on him while he was giving a sermon. And he turned around, he goes, "What are you people doing here?" So we got to give him his Purple Heart. That was pretty cool. I gotta tell the story, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Vernie is very key to building the memorial here in Norco, but he also was my pastor of choice for just about everything I put on, including my December 7th. And we would have our meetings with the powers that be with the Navy and they'd say, "Now, look, it has to be non-denominational." So I'd go, "Yes, sir." And I'd go back to Vernie and say, "You can't say Jesus." Last time, the powers that be came up and said, "He said Jesus sixty-eight times." And you know what? He winked at me when he said that. I think it was this game that everybody was playing, so... Whereas, while attending college in Visalia, Vernie Fletcher met and married Sharon Darston in 1968. They've been married for forty-eight years, forty-nine, right? Forty-nine.
June of 49.
Forty-nine. They have two adult children, five grandchildren, and one great-grandson. And whereas, after attempting miscellaneous jobs as part manager of Visalia...parts manager at Toyota, working at Olson Bodies in Tulare, Tulare, and in apprenticeship at Moore Business Forms in Visalia, he decided to enter the ministry at Tulare Missionary Baptist Church in June 1973. And...
They keep saying Tulare. It's Tular. And disal...
Isn't it? That's the way Berwin says it.
Right. Alright, you gotta figure out where you're at here. Whereas, in September 1973, Vern...did you stop there? Oh, it doesn't matter. In September 1973, Vernie entered the California Missionary Baptist Seminary in Bellflower, California, after which, in April 1970/70, accepted the pastorate of what is now the Grace Fellowship Church in Norco. And whereas, Pastor Vernie, as he is known by all, graduated from the seminary in June of 1977, has been serving as a senior pastor at the Grace Fellowship Church for forty years, bringing attendance up from approximately thirty-six to two services with more than three hundred every week. And...will we give you another one?
Yes. Whereas, over the years, Pastor Vernie has been very active within the community, including giving the invocation at numerous city council meetings, prayer at Little League opening ceremonies, veterans events, and many other city events. And whereas, Pastor Vernie and his wife Sharon have decided to retire and move to Exeter, California, to be near their daughter and her family. He will be sorely missed, as well as his humorous anecdotes. He made Norco a better place.
Now therefore, I, Greg Newton, Mayor of the city of Norco, on behalf of the city council, do hereby commend and honor Pastor Vernie Fletcher and express sincere appreciation to Pastor Vernie for his contributions to the city of Norco, its residents, and wish him and his wife much happiness as they begin their new chapter in life. Ted, do you wanna finish it up?
It's like Kevin said earlier, our beautiful George A. Ingalls Veterans Memorial could not be part of it without thinking of Vernie and the sacrifices and the contribution he has made. So Vernie, in that, all the members of the executive committee for the memorial, and I'll let everybody here see this, it's one of the flags we did up there. We signed it by all our veterans committee for him. Vernie, thank you very much for that. And you can't get away yet, we have some more.
Oh, boy. Does he doesn't have a hat?
I know, he doesn't have a hat. Well, I'm gonna...I'll take care of that.
Okay.
Part of the memorial, and we're real proud of the fact here in Norco, that we have "In God We Trust," and that's why we, as a city, start our meetings with a prayer. And Vernie's been a very important part of that. So Vernie, in part of that, the George Ingalls Memorial, and "In God We Trust" on that for him.
Thank you.
So he has a hat to remember where he is from, okay? Got a Horse Town, USA hat. And I don't know if you grabbed one of those, a fifty-year commemorative coin.
Wow.
And Vernie, don't have one, you deserve one anyway. The Vietnam Veterans Memorial pin. And that's the least we can do for you, for all the stuff you've done as a veteran, as veteran to veteran, Purple Heart recipient, and everything else. Thank you very much, brother. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Brothers, we appreciate it. And, John, I wanna say, very proud.
I can't believe...pray for me. My lawyers need all the help we can get.
I thought, God, he already knows you real well. Andy, come right by my shoulder. So, God, we bless you. Thank you all very, very much.
She's not letting you get away, she needs special...
Cheryl, once. Oh, okay. For gardens. That way it keeps the bugs out, right?
Right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, very, very much. You're really overboard.
Stay up here. Robin?
No, Vernie, you can go now.
Thank you.
Berwin, you wanna stay up here one more minute?
Very well, Stephen, sorry.
Kevin?
So in our community, we have a really special person. This is a World War II veteran. This is a guy whose father was a tailor. So when you see him wearing one of his coats, it costs a lot of money. He wears cashmere, I mean, this is a very well-dressed guy. I'm gonna have Joe come on up. Joe DiNuzzio, come on up here, buddy. It is his birthday. He's a hundred years old. And we wanted to make a fuss over you. I mean, look at how this guy dresses. See, his dad was a tailor. I mean, sharp, right? Do you wanna say a couple words about your birthday, how you got to be...we're gonna say you're thirty-nine unless you want us to cop and...
You can only sell how you look.
But you look sharp. So anyway, we want to congratulate you on the occasion of an extraordinary milestone, your one-hundredth birthday. May this celebration be an especially joyful reminder of a century of living life, right, and a happy reflection of the many memories you have made over the past century. The Norco City Council, the city of Norco, is pleased to join your family and friends in wishing you a happy one-hundredth birthday and all the best for the coming year. And you have a birthday party at Pike's Peak between one and three this coming Saturday, right? And everybody's invited and the drinks are on you.
(inaudible).
So anyway, do you have a couple words you wanna say about being a hundred?
I don't know. I don't drink and I don't smoke, maybe that's all. But for another event, I was born an Italian and our diet is different than everybody else's.
Right. Well, Joe, we want to...happy birthday. We wanna get a picture with you, okay? Because it's not every day you get to meet somebody who's a hundred years old.
Where's my...come here, come here. This is my...this is my great-granddaughter and she's the best horsewoman in this town.
We already know about her. That's no secret.
Oh, I didn't know. I never go to watch her.
Oh, well, there you go. Alright, well, let's get a photograph with you. How about...let's come out in the front. Joe, turn this way, watch out behind you. She's gonna take your picture over there.
Come here, dog.
Isn't your family here? More your family? You guys wanna come up? You got a picture?
You want your family?
That's alright. This way, this way.
Oh, okay.
Take this.
Something about being tall.
Me too.
Very much.
Happy birthday, Joe.
Happy birthday. Joe, Joe is really a World War II veteran. He fought the entire World War II. And he was at little places you probably don't remember, like Iwo Jima and Okinawa and different places like that.
There you go. Kevin?
Yep, you're welcome.
I'm gonna go out a little...out of order a little bit. Scott? We're gonna do our business appreciation honoree, leaps and bounds pediatric therapy. Good evening, how are you?
So would Cassandra come up, please? Okay, hi. Okay, just stand right there. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa and I am the Vice Chair for the Economic Development and Advisory Council. Our city council started an initiative to recognize businesses in our community that do amazing things and unique things, special for our community. So I'm here tonight to present to our honoree for the month, leaps and bounds. On behalf of the Economic Development Advisory Council, I am proud to recognize our latest business appreciation initiative honoree, leaps and bounds pediatric therapy. I wanna note that leaps and bounds was nominated for this particular month because March is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, which is celebrated in an effort to spread knowledge about developmental disabilities, including autism, Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, and spinobifia. Cassandra and her staff are positive advocates for this cause as they continuously work wonders with young patients and are very deserving of the recognition during this important awareness month. With that being said, the city of Norco hereby honors leaps and bounds pediatric therapy for bringing its groundbreaking use of horses in pediatric therapy to Norco. In addition to empowering children, leaps and bounds embodies the Horse Town, USA spirit by believing that the best outlook on life is from the saddle. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd also like to note that she's a graduate from Norco High, and so...and then we have this. We have one other thing here to give you. Because it's the Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, the city wanna honoree give you a proclamation.
Thank you.
Put your hands up.
I'd like to thank the city council for all of their support since we started six years ago. I am Norconian, born and raised. My parents have been here forty-one years. Thank them for their support, my husband for helping me bring this to Norco and supporting me and my daughter out there. Yep, Norco High grad, Norco born and raised, came back here and it's just, I'm proud and honored to make a difference in the community that I grew up and now live and call home again. So, thank you very much. Should we come in the front?
Come in the front. It's too quiet. Let's go ahead and introduce Bill Hedrick, our trustee from Riverside Community College District. Good evening, Bill.
It is a pleasure to be here. This room looks very familiar to me. I'm the Corona Norco Board for twenty-two years and I believe you're in my chair over there, Kevin. But also, a little sandbag tonight because we have the retiring, beloved pastor and the sharpest, and sharpest dressed, brightest hundred-year-old, and now you have me. So I will be brief, but I tell you, it is exciting to have an opportunity to serve in the education venue again. And I look forward to working with the council, the city, on any interest that you may have with Norco College. I ran because I really do believe that Norco College is a terrific institution. And I don't think it's well-known enough, honestly. It is a treasure for this city and for Western Riverside County. And I hope to be here with some frequency, certainly at your invitation. If not, I'll be there with a card. I want to highlight some programs that are up on the hill that I don't understand why there aren't people wrapped around the campus trying to enroll. They are spectacular opportunities. And so, again, I thank you for this chance to introduce myself. I feel like I'm home again. You know, I was not raised in Norco, but four of my kids graduated from Norco High. We did Norco Little League for fifteen years, just live on the other side of River Road, so all our shopping's in Norco too. So I really have an affinity for the community and I want to work with you closely to make sure that the college reflects what you would like to see there and that the Norco community and the larger community understands the programs and unique opportunities offered. So with that, thank you so much and look forward to working with you.
Welcome back, Bill. Okay, now we're gonna have a presentation by Kristen Martin from Eagle Scout from Troop Thirty-Three. And Brian, you have the proclamation. Good evening, Christopher.
Hi. Sorry, I'm just making sure the clicker works because it didn't...
It's all yours.
Okay. Can you go back? Back one, two. Okay, sorry. Hi, my name is Chris Martin. I've come here to present the council, my Eagle Scout project, from the beginning to the end of the project.
Well done.
I didn't do it. That was good.
Good job.
Well, guess I'm done. Okay. My project that I was asked to do was to take out this sign in front of the Scout House slash We People Play House slash Community Center in front of the...and take it out and replace it. The area...the sign itself has been there since I was a Cub Scout and probably before then, before that too, so it's been there for over ten years, I know that for sure. The sign has gotten flaky, starts...it started rotting, it's a very old sign. We decided to take out the area. My project started in my backyard. We sanded down all the wood, painted it or stained it, my mistake, and then routed it all in the same day. We had adults, younger kids and older kids come back out backyard and helped all in the same day. The routing started halfway through the day. We purposely routed it to more look like a sign and you would see something in the...you would see something on a trail while backpacking or hiking because I'm a Boy Scout and I thought it looked very nice, too. So the sign, I can tell you, was something we were scared was gonna be a lot of work to take out because it was cemented in, it was...all this area is just old wood. We thought it was gonna take an hour or most. Mr. Holden, if any of you don't know, is an adult who's very active with us, came up there. All done. It was very fast and helped the day go by really quick with working and all that. We started digging the holes, we also took out all the grass and...or took out all the weeds, so we would plant mulch after. We had...I had the adults back it in the sign while the boys were working on the physical labor, while the parents were just putting the sign all together. We put the sign up, after we were done with the sign, we poured the cement in. Of course, adults only did the cementing, boys mixed it up, so...older boys mixed it up so nothing bad would happen. The bottom right corners, all the boys who were present at the time of the photo, some two or three more boys came, but it was a very big group, more than I thought because of...it was we...no, parade was Saturday. It was...what was Sunday? Bridging. Bridging for Cub Scouts, so a lot more came than I thought would actually happen. So I'm happy about that and mostly older boys, a lot easier for me. We put down mulch on the same day we were done with the sign, so everything would be done in one day and I wouldn't have to worry about anything else. Mulching, done. That's Paul Holden and Robert Bick now finishing up the final touches on the sign. That's the final project. I wanted to...the thing I feel like I did above and beyond, instead of just adding the one sign, I added another sign because the street there has a curve when you're... We also took out all the grass and, or took out all the weeds, so we would plant mulch after. We, I had the adults back it in the sign while the boys were working on the physical labor while the parents were just putting the sign all together. We put the sign up, after we were done with the sign, we poured the cement in. Of course, adults only did the cementing, boys mixed it up, so, older boys mixed it up, so nothing bad would happen. The bottom right corners, all the boys who were present at the time of the photo, some, two or three more boys came, but it was a very big group, more than I thought because of, it was We, no, Parade was Saturday, it was, what was Sunday? Bridging, Bridging first Cub Scouts, so a lot more came than I thought would actually happen. So, I'm happy about that, and mostly older boys, a lot easier for me. We put down mulch on the same day we were done with the sign, so everything would be done in one day and I wouldn't have to worry about anything else. Mulching, done. That's Paul Holden and Robert Bick now finishing up the final touches on the sign. That's the final project. I wanted to, the thing I feel like I did above and beyond, instead of just adding the one sign, I added another sign because the street there has a curve when you're coming down from Church on the Hill, which makes it very hard to see the sign. So, I decided with Mr., with the help of Mr. Kehan, to put it at a, like 45-degree angle so people coming down the street would be able to see the sign. That's it. I would like to thank the city very much for helping me do the project, more specifically, Brian Petrie, Michelle England, and Hank Coke, that helped me through the process of managing and getting everything ready so the proposal would be done. I, the entire process, the entire project cost around $920. I had $30 left, and I would like to present the city, $30 of the money I made left. Not big, but hey, it's better than nothing. You got a new sign, be happy.
Stay, stay up for second Christopher. Brian?
Well, Christopher's, by the way, I was Chris's Scout Master when he was in Cub Scouts, all the way from Tiger to Weeboles, and then I got to hand the baton off to Jeff. So, it's, it really makes me really proud to see you have achieved what you have with this project and going from a Tiger Cub all the way up to an Eagle Scout. That's just unbelievable and it's really, really neat. So, Christopher, on behalf of the City of Norco, we'd like to present you with the certificate of recognition for your outstanding accomplishments and your pursuit of the distinguished rank of Eagle Scout. Congratulations, and thank you so much for what you do here.
Thank you very much.
You're a model to our community, and I hope other young men like yourself, you've set a great example for them. I do want to tell you one little story. I know Chris's dad really well, and he passed away about a year ago. And one of the things he wanted to see Chris do is get his Eagle Scout. And I know your dad's looking down on you right now, and he is a very proud man to see you have gotten where you are today. So, congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
Where's my mom? She needs to know.
That's a tough one. That's a tough one. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. Throughout our conversations at various city council meetings and town halls, I've addressed a lot of concerns, a lot of conversation about our homeless population in Norco, and have always referred to our homeless outreach team, our collaboration with them, not only them, but the Department of Social Services and the amazing service they provide to our homeless community. The homeless outreach team consists of two deputies, and they work out of the Hoopa Valley Station. We've utilized their services on several occasions regarding several of the transients and homeless people that we have in our community. And at this point, they're going to tell us a little bit about the behind-the-scenes work they do. And I'd like to introduce Deputy Bridget Rexick and Deputy Erin Avola.
Good evening for having us. So, the point of our PowerPoint is just to give a general idea of how our team operates, what we do from a county-wide perspective on down to a city perspective and what our programs entail. History of the homeless outreach team, I was assigned to Hoopa Valley. I've been there actually since 2006, but during the years of 2014 and 15, I was assigned to the, to the special enforcement team. During that time, one of my collateral duties was to address the homeless issues in the city of Hoopa Valley specifically. My partner, Deputy Rexick, at that time was assigned to the city of Paris, and one of her collateral duties was to deal with the homeless issues in the city of Paris. We also put together a team to do some studies nationwide on how other agencies deal with homeless issues in their communities, and we brought some of the, what we thought would be the best ideas for Riverside County specifically, and implemented that into the homeless outreach team, which was put together and started in January of 2016. Our team consists of two deputies, myself and my partner. We are a county-wide team. We do have a station liaison at each of our 10 stations throughout the county to assist in their specific areas with the homeless issues out there. Some of our numbers for the point-in-time count, in 2016, we had over 2,000 homeless individuals, which is a 12% decrease from the previous year. 1,300 of those are unsheltered, while 814 are sheltered. Difference between unsheltered and sheltered, the unsheltered, the people we see on the streets, living in encampments, storefronts, river bottoms, and the sheltered are the ones that are actually in a, in a homeless shelter. In 2015, the counts were a little bit more. We had about 2,400, which is a 17% decrease from 2013. And our homeless individuals include families, veterans, and kids as well. We grouped our homeless populations in two groups, the Group A, it's about 2/3 of our homeless population. These are the folks that have minimum barriers to address their homeless needs. They may experience situational homelessness. They can benefit from temporary programs such as a year assistance, rental assistance, and some may just need three months of rental assistance. Well, we have our Group B individuals, those are the folks we see living in the river bottoms, makeshift shelters, remote areas. These are the folks that have been homeless for 15, 20 years. I think the person that we've housed that had the most years of homelessness was about 25 years. This is the group that, they have the most barriers, they're the hardest, hardest to deal with, most difficult to address their needs of homelessness. Granted, some of them just don't want to move out of homelessness, so rather stay on the street. Our encampment styles, we have a street-based encampment, the ones that sleep in the storefronts, the parks. Basically, they're, they can be, they're visual from the streets. Our encampment styles, the ones you see there, that's a river bottom encampment. Those, a lot of folks don't see, those are pretty integrated encampments. We've been down to encampments where they have swamp coolers, and they have power, and they, we've even been down to a portion of what we call the swamp, where they've actually dug and hit the water. Our homeless outreach team goals is to contact and identify homeless individuals within the county. We complete, complete necessary documentation for services. This is the vulnerability index that we fill out, as well as getting them social security cards and their IDs. The Sheriff's Department, we don't provide the service, we connect them to providers who have the service. So, we take all their information down and forward that information to agencies like Housing Authority, Path of Life, and other agencies like that. We also assist in the case management. Keep in mind, some of these people have been homeless for 10 years, and to put them in an apartment right away and expect them to live like we all do, it doesn't happen. So, we got to, we got to help with the case management. And of course, our end goal is to lead homeless out of homelessness. Some of the partners we work with on a daily basis, Riverside, Department of Behavioral Health, DPS, Housing Authority, Coachella Valley Rescue Mission, Path of Life, and Health Hope, as well as Code Enforcement and US Vets. Some of the program services, as I mentioned earlier, there's rental assistance for up to 12 months and/or permanent housing. There's physical mental health services, referrals to substance abuse programs, jaw placement, and life skills. Like I said, we fill out some paperwork, and based on their score, we'll determine what type of services they qualify for. So, where the funds come from, the main source of the funding is HUD. We participate, the county, from a, from a community of care level, we participate in the point-in-time count, which is an annual count, and that count is actually required in order to receive funding from HUD. There's nonprofit grant recipients, private faith-based organization, as well as Housing As I mentioned earlier, we do have a station liaison at each of our 10 stations. They work hand-in-hand with us. They pretty much do the same job we do, but more specifically to their, to their area. You know, they got to build a relationship and trust with the homeless individuals, identify the problem encampments. We all know, there's complaints that come in from all different levels regarding encampments. Her and I don't have the manpower to handle that on a county level. Our station liaisons do handle that, and then we'll come in and assist with whatever assistance they might need. Conduct enforce when necessary. We don't, we don't let these individuals get away with crime. We do look for other alternatives when it comes to enforcing the laws, but for the most part, when a crime is committed, we do enforce. And to maintain knowledge of the homeless in the area and continue to provide information regarding individuals to the homeless outreach team. Our correctional facilities, we are, we're still in the process of implementing a program where anytime an individual is booked in and they do identify themselves as homeless, information will come to our desk so we can try to set something up, set them programs, or get our providers involved. From the time comes when they do get released, they're not released back onto the streets where it's going to be the continuing cycle of them being homeless. Like I said, we still are in the, in the beginning stages of implementing this program, but we're hoping to stop the cycle of homelessness when they are in jail, getting sober, and recovering from, you know, years of homelessness.
So, one of the main points we like to point out with the homeless populations affects your community through quality of life. So, that's important in two aspects. It not only affects the citizens within the community, but we can also change the quality of life for a homeless person. One of the big pieces we, we back is community education. We like to be able to talk to business owners, citizens, and we really implement anti-panhandling because we see that the more often we give money and things to people that are panhandling, we're just enabling them to stay on our streets. So, the more money they make, the more they're going to come back to those corners. So, we always talk to business owners and just, you know, tell them to give us a call, let us know when people are panhandling, let, let the police department be able to get them off the streets and out of the way. And if we have people who have the really big hearts and want to give, we just promote them giving in the right way, which to us means giving to programs that give them an opportunity to get off the street. We never discourage people giving food, although it's proven the reason that they're homeless doesn't have to do with them not having food. And it's, they, these homeless people have tons of food in their camps, so we just encourage just giving money in the right way. If you want to give clothes or food, give it to your shelters and organizations that can give back. Some of the benefits to the community that you'll see through our program, in, after removing the homeless from the street, we're intending for business owners to have a safer feeling. We often get calls from business owners saying that their patrons are worried, they're scared because the homeless are standing out there. So, we want to clean up those ideas. The parks are going to be safer, they're going to be cleaner. It's proven that homeless tend to sleep during the day in the parks because they want to be in sight so that they're not, they're not attacked at night. So, homeless tend to wander and do things at night. With removing the homeless, you'll see a lowering of petty crimes, and which overall gives more time for deputies to spend time on bigger crimes within your cities. So, overall, this is going to, this will improve quality of life for everyone involved. Some of the challenges the homeless face with, within the program when we get them housed is obviously maintaining sobriety. Homeless are either riddled with mental health problems or drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and if they didn't have one of those before they started, they usually end up with both of them. Finding jobs is really hard. They usually have a great gap in their employment history, or they have criminal history. So, they, finding them a job is often hard. They usually don't have transportation when they get housed, so finding a job gets even harder because now you expect them to ride a bus for hours a day. And although we think that they would want to do it, it just becomes more tasking and daunting on them. So, it's hard for them to also obtain necessary items within housing. One of the things we see is we have these programs that house them, and then they get into this apartment, they're really excited, but they don't have a bed, they don't have a plate, they don't have a cup, a towel, anything like that. So, those are all things that they think of. And obviously, the last one is huge, they have a huge fear of failing and becoming homeless again. So, that's how they become resistant to us. They say, why would I want to get out of the street and go be housed to just fail and come back in a year and be homeless again? So, all of these are huge challenges for the homeless that they have, they express to us all the time. Some of the benefits we see from the homeless being housed is an opportunity for self-sufficiency, an opportunity to rehabilitate their alcohol, drug use, domestic violence, anger management, whatever it may be. We work on making kind of a plan with them on goals to reach one at a time, baby steps. They, they get connected to mental health services, to doctors, so that we can improve their mental health as well as their physical health, because while they're on their streets, everything is totally declined. It improve, it'll improve their daily life skills because we kind of walk side by side with them, like my partner was saying, and you have to teach them that today you have to get up, you have to shower, you need to think about what's the next thing on the agenda versus just waking up in a camp and just existing. And also, we find that by housing them, it's a much more effective solution than to just give them a citation for panhandling, for loitering, for trespassing, because what that does is it creates a ton of fines that we know homeless cannot pay. And then, in the long run, when we go to house them, they have warrants, and we tend to not be able to get housing for them, the more of a background they have. So, obviously, the better solution is a long-term solution, which is housing. And the most important is, we want to give everyone a new opportunity in life, a chance to live as we all consider normal. This is super exciting, I'm probably sure that you've heard about this, but Riverside County has hit functional zero. We gained a federal title, and oftentimes, this title is very confusing because people think that we have no homeless vets. It's not true. It basically means that we have instituted a well-coordinated and efficient community system that assures homelessness is rare and brief and non-recurring, and no veteran is forced to live on the street. So, it's highly important for us in Riverside County as a, as a team to be able to identify the veterans, find those that want the help and get them the help. Those that don't want the help, we never stop. We just continue to work with the, with the veterans. So, the picture of the gentleman on the left, I think the little note kind of says, oh, thank you for seeing me as a veteran and not a homeless man, because they're all just human. So, a few of the success stories, these are reasons why we know the programs work over the several years that my partner and I have done it. Young lady on the top, 23 years old, she was homeless for three years, addicted to heroin and meth. I chased this young lady around for many years. She finally took the program. We never expect that they succeed in substance abuse treatment, we expect that they fail, we just want to reintegrate them back into programs. She went into a few programs, she found out she was pregnant, we were able to keep her into a program, and that little baby was born heroin-free. She's now at home, she's married to the father who's also clean, they've both been clean for several years, and she is now a college student. So, that's a great success right there. It's, it's actually really neat. So, the second one there is another youngster who was running the streets, a heroin addict, he was just a mess, and you just keep at him. And when you keep at him, that doesn't mean that we go over and we pull him up off the streets today, that could mean a year from now. It just means that we have to be repetitive in offering services because we know that it's going to take probably more than 50 times that we talk to them before they'll say, okay. And so, he's reunited, he went through a Victory Outreach Program, a year program, he's a part-time worker, he's a waiter, and he's doing great. The gentleman up top, he's a veteran, he was sleeping in a walker, 70 years old, doesn't do drugs, doesn't drink, just kind of lost in life. do drugs, doesn't drink, just kind of lost in life. And he, we were able to pick him up and get him housed. He's housed permanently on a VASH voucher. He will never have to worry about being on the streets again. Another one of the services that we do, the bottom picture, is a couple who had a disabled child who was in Reno, and they had come out to Riverside County to take care of the lady's mother who was terminally ill. And they became homeless for, they were out there for more than four or five years, and they just said they wanted to reunite. So, we were able to pack them up, clean up their camp before they leave, get them a bus ticket, and reunite them with their son. So, it's another service we have. The gentleman on the top was an interesting story because I think oftentimes, we think homeless must come from poor families, or, you know, a typical walk of life, but in reality, any one of us can have a homeless family member. He was, this gentleman sat in the, in the park for years. We helped him through just kind of staying at him again. And the cool thing about this one, my husband, also a law enforcement officer, works in LA, he called me one day and said, by any chance, would you know Tony? Well, his partner he's worked with for years and years on end, that's his brother. And he didn't even know that for years I knew him and that we had housed him. So, we were able to not only get him permanent housing, but we were able to reunite him with his family. And his other brother is a CHP commissioner. He has sisters who are nurses, you know, a very well-established family, but he got into drinking, and I think oftentimes, just kind of floats away. So, the last success story we'll share, which we have plenty more. This one was very challenging, and it was interesting for us to learn because we are a new program. Patrick in the middle, he, at the time, was 26-years-old. I've known him for about three years. He was in the city of Paris, and I just thought he was the greatest guy. He told the best stories. And you can imagine, as a patrol deputy, that's exciting. He told me that his sisters are the Kardashians. And we used to ask him, cool, you know, who's your favorite, and not really thinking, like, how can I help him? So, then we fast-forward. Over the summer, Erin and I received a call from a lady who said, someone in Paris says that my son is there. When she told me who he was, I was floored. So, he had left his home three years ago, and his, and that was in San Diego. His mom and dad had no clue where he was. So, I could have changed it back then, so I have a little regret. However, we work diligently with Patrick. He's severely, severely mentally ill with a plethora of diagnoses we could, we could go and talk about. We were, we were able to get him emergency housing, which involves a hotel, which the Department of Mental Health will offer. We tried to get him housed into an apartment, but unfortunately, he's, he still suffers and is challenged from his mental illness. However, over time, we were able to reintroduce his family to him because he wanted nothing to do with them, because he thought that they had, had just disowned him. And, and it took a lot of work. Like, 4:30 in the morning, we were out beating his camp, let's go, let's do this. And one day, all his stars aligned, and we were able to reunite the family. And it was the most amazing thing. So, although Patrick still suffers from many things, he's back home in San Diego. He's no longer homeless. And we've learned a great, a great deal about how we can just reconnect families and try to understand people with, with all different types of challenges and barriers. So, obviously, we continue to learn as well with everyone else. So, these are kind of some joy stories that, that kind of make you go home at night. And although you can't help everyone because not everyone wants help, you know that you have helped someone and you've changed someone's life. So, that is our presentation. To keep it short for you, do you have any questions for us?
Does counsel have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Where were you guys when I was pushing the black and white? I know. I'm just kidding. Having worked Elsinore, San Jacinto, Paris, Temecula, Alwanga, I really appreciate what the sheriff has done in taking this on. So, Eric, this is probably one of the good programs of the Sheriff's Department, and thank you for starting that, because as a former deputy retired, it, it is, you don't know what to do with them. You can't keep throwing them in jail. This is a good thing. This is a really good thing.
It's a great thing. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to city council communications, reports on regional boards. Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's say, Monday evening, I attended the League of California Cities Regional Meeting with Mayor Pro Tim Hoffman. I'll let him give that report. But the last two weeks, we attended the girls softball opening and the Little League opening seasons. And tomorrow is the 40th anniversary of RTA. We're going to have a celebration over at their bus terminal, starting, I believe, at 10:30 in the morning. I don't know how long it goes, but it's 40 years that the RTA buses have been in business. It's growing. It's the second-largest bus transportation in the United States. It's second-only to the state of Connecticut. And RCTC, I know all of, somebody that have to drive the 91 freeway, you're going to be happy about this. On March 31st, it's going to be the opening celebration. It'll be at the MetroLink Station down at Maine and the 91 freeway at 11:00 AM. But starting this week, they'll be working night and day to prepare the new lanes for opening. Motorists should expect multiple lane closures and ramp closures on eastbound and westbound 91, with particularly significant work occurring between Thursday, March 16th, and Sunday, March 19th. We'll be advising drivers to expect delays of at least one hour when traveling through the project limits on March 19th, and to allow extra travel and to avoid area by using State Route 57 and State Route 60 as alternative routes or travel by MetroLink. Although the new lanes will open March 20th, construction will be ongoing until the fall, with periodic closures required. And I noticed in the paper today that the only ramps is closing during the day, every day for the next few days. There's a Lincoln on route westbound. So, if you cut through like I do over there, you need to find another street to get on it. But it's been three years, and they're right on schedule because they said they had opened spring of 2017. And if you go down the 15 freeway, before you get to the 91, you notice they're, they're stacking all the concrete barriers out in the middle of the 15 on top of them. So, they're, they're pulling up their construction stuff, and they're cleaning up underneath all the overpasses and bridges and everything. So, it's going to be exciting. It'll probably last about two years with all the houses they're building down below there. But I guess that's progress. On vector control, we have a meeting tomorrow, but they're really gearing up and fighting the mosquitoes with all this rain we've had, and the weeds are growing, and that's a big problem, that we're going to have a huge mosquito war this year. It's already began. The vector's now treating rainmaking park in that area. At least once a week, they're checking because there's a high count of mosquitoes over there because of the river, the lake at the Navy Base, and then there's the water we go behind it back over there. So, remind your neighbors to keep their weeds down and everything. I figure we'll get more rain before the end of spring, but right now, there's a big problem with weeds in town, so that's just going to add to the mosquito problem. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I attended the sheriff's graduation with my two boys, and that was a really nice ceremony. My youngest has been inspired to become a sheriff's deputy, so that was fun. Attended Little League opening day, casino night for Horseman's, which was a great event. Had a lot of fun. Also, on Sunday, attended Congregation Beth Shalom to see Kevin win a legacy award from that organization, and so that was a, a nice afternoon as well.
Ted?
You guys go with the fun stuff. March 8th, city staff, along with Councilman Bash and I, met with the Navy. We had a quarterly meeting. We got updates on the buildings and the, their improvements they're doing there, especially to the food service that they're trying to upgrade. They're having problems, but it's the government. So, they're, the photovoltaic arrays, they're, they're still working on that. They're not rushing. They're not dragging their feet. They're just not pursuing it real fast at this time. So, until they get further direction. Of course, the material warehouse, the big one they're going to do there, they are going to make it so that it is more in design, or it looks like the rest of the building's up there. And then, what Berwin was saying, the Lake and Landscape Management Office, they're going to try to restore the health of the lake through water quality and remove excessive vegetation, cat tails and water treatment, and they do work with vector control on the mosquitoes. And I asked them, and what Chief Lane and I were talking about is water source. So, I did plug them to see if we can increase the capacity. In case there is a major fire, we have a place to get some water. So, that was with the Navy. And if I can, this was, March 6th, had the Veterans Committee meeting, and we went over a couple of things, but the major thing we're doing, and I would invite everyone, to include all of my Vietnam veteran era and Vietnam war-era friends, compadres. March 29th, 9:00 AM, this is free, at the George Ingalls Veterans Memorial Plaza. A ceremony starts at 9:00 AM. The gates open at 8:30. This is a Vietnam Veterans Day welcome home. It's, George was killed in Vietnam. That memorial is dedicated to him, to all veterans. And part of our tribute every year is to welcome home Vietnam veterans, because we didn't get welcome home back in the 70s, in the late 60s and 70s. Also, we're going to do a special tribute to US Army General, Lieutenant General Harold Hal Moore, who passed away in February of this year. If you've ever seen the movie, We Are Soldiers, it was based upon his life. And I feel he was probably one of the better soldier, soldier, as far as I'm concerned, during that time period. And I'll defer later on to Jeff, who's going to talk about April 16th and the George Ingalls Day up there next month. Also, the mayor and I met with city staff, public works regarding a, on March 8th, regarding North Avenue improvements. And I think we had a very productive meeting, and I look forward Chad and your people to come up with some great ideas on that one. I want to hang out. Ligo Cities, Councilman Hannah and I went and attended, got to drive out to Indian Wells. You know what's going on right now in Indian Wells? There's a tennis tournament, and that place is packed. But needless to say, we had a meeting out there, and a lot of good things. They kind of, their main speaker was Chris Honi from the Budget Center. And if you ever get a chance, go online and look up the California Budget Perspective, what's at stake in the state and federal budget proposals? For the average citizen, you're going to see that our state's in trouble. That's it, bottom line. And unless our leadership of Sacramento changed the tune, we might see some really cutbacks from the feds. But that's just my take on it. Now, as far as the major thing, and this is what we need to really consider, because this affects us locally, we just talked about the 91. At Wednesday night's meeting, they wanted us to vote for oppose or support this AB 91 that has been proposed. And the bill would require Caltrans to convert all existing high occupancy vehicle lanes in Riverside County to operate only during hours of heavy commuter traffic. During all other times, the lanes would be open to all vehicles, including those with a single occupant. In addition, any new HOV lane will be required to operate under the same requirements. After May 1st, 2019, Caltrans could reinstate the HOV lanes in Riverside County to operate with occupancy requirements 24 hours a day after reporting the transportation committee's the effect that the conversions had on all safety and traffic. This bill would specify these conditions, would not apply to existing toll lanes. Face value, oh, that sounds great. Until you think about it, we could lose our federal funding on these lanes. So, the issue was tabled because this thing has to go back to committee to be worked on. And just so you know, it's, it's AB 91, so I suggest you all, let's take a look at it. This affects our end of the county, more so than it affects the east end of the county. So, the issue was tabled because of this new proposal. This may affect us in the future, so I just want you to be aware of it's coming down the pipeline. And then, the other meeting as part of it was the regular meeting of the City Selection Committee, which, because of our two-hour drive over there, I missed the first part of it, but all they did was select the east side member for LAFCO. And that concludes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Kevin?
I attended WRCOG, Western Regional Governments, Riverside County Governments. Not a lot to report there. Riverside City, Riverside Conservation Authority, not a lot to report there. Interesting, though, one of the ideas that's come up is that they make the area where Arlington is across the street to maybe utilize that as a mitigation area, because the developer's getting frustrated, and people are trying to push to maybe say, hey, you know, your legacy isn't just building low-income houses. It's maybe you could call it, you know, Galliano Park, something like that. So, there's a, a push to maybe put that within the RCA realm. What the RCA is, which, which you know, is it is a builder. It used to be in the old days, you had so many hoops to jump through to take care of rats and different animals. You can actually purchase land or areas within conservation areas so that you can build in one area to conserve in another. And what they're trying to do is create a pathway for animals to go from point A to point B and sort of cobweb it all the way through Riverside County. It's considered one of the best programs in the nation. With the Measure GG, you're probably seeing at your local schools, a lot of new fencing that's going up around all the schools, safety fencing. There's a big, big move to make things safe. Also, every school pretty much in Norco is being outfitted with brand-new, incredible technical stuff. I mean, screens and all kinds of computer things. I mean, it's really amazing. One of the big pushes is to point out that Norco High School is a very technology-oriented high school. Again, I think I mentioned last time, we're kind of still in discussions about pushing the boundaries all the way to the 91 freeway. One of the things we need to make sure we let the schools know is when they have a special event, they need to let us know, because otherwise, they'll get ticketed. You can actually get a permit to park on the horse trail for a couple of hours if you're having a big school event, but they got to let us know. I, too, attended the girls softball and the Little League, and that was really incredible. I went to the sheriff's. It was the 200th anniversary, and one of the things that Stan Stiff told me, told me, is he has to cut $40 million out of his budget. And the other thing they're having trouble with is they can't get deputies. So, that's kind of, kind of interesting. One of the things that's occurring for Memorial Day, which is very interesting, is the Navy wants to be involved, as does the Naval Hospital. And so, the Navy has actually found, they asked for a non-commissioned officer, and they brought in somebody who they'd like to speak. And then, the Naval Hospital down in San Diego is going to send up their head nurse, and it looks like this is going to be a really big deal. I got a call today from ABC that wants to cover it, and it's kind of going to be like, I don't want to offend anybody, like an all-girls' day, it seems like, because they have a lot of, a lot of women officers and retired officers that are going to be doing these presentations. We'll get together with American Legion and talk to them about that. On the 7th, for all veterans at Norco High School, they're doing a Veterans Appreciation Day. We've been in the planning stages for that. Veterans from all conflicts be there at 8 o'clock in the morning for breakfast, and we're going to have you meet with the high school kids. I'm looking for 40 to 60 veterans, so maybe Sparky can let the American Legion know, and I've sent some stuff over to them. On the 8th, we're doing a Vietnam appreciation. We're going to be showing the film, We Were Soldiers. We have one of the actors in the film that will be there. He played the sergeant. We'll be showing news reels from 50, 67, and then, we're going to have a forum with four, Remy. And then we're going to have a forum with four, Remy from Norco High School, Ben Gonzalez, and then some of the, Johnny Griffiths and Dick Haley. They're going to do a forum. Diana Stiller at Norco High School is going to conduct it. Then we're going to show Good Morning Vietnam. It's going to be kind of exciting. Also, on the 8th, there is the run, the Kiwanis Run, which I hope people will try to get I did so many things. I'm also on the President's Advisory Committee for Norco College, and I hope the people that were invited will be able to attend tomorrow night at 5:30, the, his sort of coming out at the Norco College. They had three candidates, and they were all super strong. And the guy that got the job ultimately that was picked by the chancellor is sensational. And his big thing is economic development and trying to drive home exactly what I think we need in Norco, is to make people aware of the college and what the opportunities are. And finally, because of their victory in Bullhead City, I don't know if people know this or not, but the Norco High softball team was just declared the number-one high school softball team in the nation. And I think that's like the second time. They're the only team, other than a football team out of Fontana, that was number-one in the nation and number-one nationally in California, and they were the national champions. I mean, all three categories, and that was a few years ago. So, and these are like juniors, so it's pretty sensational. Anyway, that's all I have. I have a bunch more stuff, but that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, I attended the Chino Desalter Authority Board Meeting, and basically it was just consent calendar and some closed-session items, so not much to report from that. Last Saturday, it was great with Little League and casino nights, so a day of baseball and gambling is just perfect with me. So moving on, we'll go on to the city council consent items. I'm going to pull item number E. Cheryl, any other items that council wants to pull?
Move to approve the remainder.
Councilmembers Gremeyer, Hannah, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the reason I took out item E is for Roger. You or Scott wanted to make a statement of fact on this item?
The Vice Chair of EDAC, Scott DeRosa, I believe, has a little kick it off.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Newton and council members. Yes, EDAC is really happy to be asking you to support that letter to go to the city of Los Angeles for supporting the Olympics to come. We feel, or we'd like to believe, that there's a lot of opportunity there besides offering our support, but to bring recognition to us that we have facilities that could help with the training and whatnot before the Olympics for all the different teams. George Ingalls and all the other places that we have here in Norco where they could be practicing and so forth. And so, yes, we really, really would like to see the city encourage or submit that letter of support. We also believe that if we have teams coming here to practice, that that could help with businesses in the local area for obvious reasons. And if my memory recalls correctly, I believe back in the heyday of the Nacorion Hotel, they sponsored the Olympic swim team for training and so forth. So again, it's not something that we haven't done in the past, and it would be a great thing for us to bring to our future. That's it.
Thank you, Scott. Roger?
Yes, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out that this resolution was not solicited by the Olympic Committee. It was EDAC's initiative to take up this item. And, you know, Scott makes a great point that whether it's for practice, qualifying rounds, or even medal competition, we do have sites here in Norco, and we need to make those known to the committee should LA be successful in its bid. I mean, there are some inland sites already designated for Olympic competition, San Dimas for mountain biking, and Lake Paris for rowing. So these inland venues are not unrealistic. This resolution, should you adopt it, we'll send it to your counterpart in Los Angeles, Mayor. We'll send it to Eric Garcetti and the LA 2024 Committee, along with a letter indicating some of the opportunities to make Norco an Olympic city.
Thank you, Roger. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I had something to that, Mr. Mayor. A few years ago, and I don't know where the Olympics were held, but Brenheim down at Capitano, which is Silver Lakes out here, he was able to attract all the equestrian teams to come into his place and practice and try out to make the Olympics. And he had about 15,000 people a day through his facility. So that would be a big boon to our area if we could land that. Thank you.
And top of that, Prado Tiro, that was in 1984. Prado Tiro was built there in Chino for the shoe to handle that. So the inland empire in our inland area, those cities benefited from this. So I'm very happy that EDAC can help you support that.
Just need a second.
Councilmembers Hannah, Gremeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move into public comments. Cheryl, are there any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have some cards here. Rachel Gonzaga from Assemblymember Sabrina Cervantes's office.
Hi, Rachel.
Hello again. Good to see everyone. Rachel Gonzaga with the Office of Assemblymember Sabrina Cervantes. So Mayor, city council members, I just wanted to come to provide a brief update in regards to some of the things that are going on. Just to echo what Councilmember Hoffman said in regards to AB-91, it has been pulled in regards to some of the concerns that RCTC did say in regards to the federal funding, so we're trying to work out those amendments. So I understand where you're coming from. And then just to echo with what Councilmember Hannah said, I highly recommend everyone, if you could stay off the 91, now would be a good time, all the way up until March 19th, until the grand opening on the 20th, because it is very backed up. We have to take the 91 to get to work, so we've been late pretty much every day. In addition, just a few announcements. Assemblymember Cervantes has been selected as the chair for the Select Committee on Veterans Education and Employment, which is a great opportunity for us. We were fortunate enough to take a tour of the Warfare Center this last Friday, and then we'll be attending the VIP event for Norco College. So we're hoping to see what we could bring forth in working with both the center as well as the college and see what could come of that. In addition, I would like to introduce the newest member to our team, Justin Dewell. Justin comes from us from the National League of Cities. He actually worked on the mayor's challenge to end veteran homelessness, as well as in regards to senior housing. So I'll give him a few moments to talk, but he will be covering the city of Norco, and you will be seeing him pretty frequently.
Thank you, Rachel. Honorable Mayor, Council. As Rachel said, my name's Justin Dewell. I'm the newest member of Assemblymember Cervantes's team. I'll be covering Norco. I look forward to meeting all of you and working with all of you. I'll be the staff lead on housing and homelessness issues, veterans affairs, and higher education. So thanks for having me tonight. I'll be back soon, and thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Eric Lang, and I am a resident of Norco for 22 years now. Moved in from Southern California, been here all my life, and came out here to enjoy the country atmosphere. My problem, or what I want to share with you, is back in 2012, I approached the code enforcement people about the property, the adjacent property to me, turning into a junkyard. And they worked with me, and I worked with them. We got some accomplished. After about nine months of improvements in that property, things started falling backwards, and it just got worse. I think about two years ago, no, about a year and a half ago, Javier asked your assistance in getting some legal assistance in changing the pattern that was going on over there. And I guess my purpose here tonight is, is that this doesn't fall through the cracks. It seems going on three years now, and I know it's difficult for legal action to improve overnight. But I guess right now, we're, the city is having problems in the area. The courts are having problems in the area with what's going on at that property. And I'm not going to mention the property, but I'm sure Javier can update you. There are a lot of pictures that he has showing the progression and the regression of the cleanup of that property. So if, one incident that happened last night that's quite common, and I've called the police department every time it happens, is that they'll create noise at 12, 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, and my bedroom is 10 feet from their access to the backyard. There's stuff going in and out, in and out. Last night, they were working on a car in the backyard with a, what do they call it? An air gun that removes nuts and bolts from tires. And that happened at 11:30 last night. I called the sheriff's department, and thankfully, they responded within 20 minutes, and I was able to get back to sleep. Anyway, don't forget our little neighborhood there on Norco Drive. Thank you.
If you would, Steve, could you, do you know the subject property that's being questioned?
Yeah.
Okay. We will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Deanna Sterns.
I think I actually sent you. I saw the whole thing.
I'm a almost lifelong Norco resident. Graduated from Norco High. I live on Norco Drive across from the residence, directly across from the residence he was speaking about. We've lived there 13 years. It's gotten significantly worse over the year, over the last handful of years. I've had to call the sheriff's department regarding them blocking my mailbox. There have been a couple instances where I have not received my mail because they have blocked my mailbox. There's always multiple, multiple cars there parked in front of their house, in their yard, blocking their mailbox, blocking our street, in front of our house and our mailbox. They've had motorhomes parked in front of their house, people living in it for a couple 10, 12 days at a time. It's just getting significantly worse. Traffic 24/7. We've had, my husband has pictures, but they've parked cars that leak oil. We have now oil stains in front of our, in front of our house, in front of the street. We park in our garage or in our driveway. It's just gotten significantly worse, and we're just all here to, you know, power in numbers, trying to get it across that it's just a very big eyesore in our neighborhood. And we're all just kind of tired of it. So there's a few more people that have other things to say, but just to reiterate what we're all trying to say. So it's becoming quite the eyesore for our neighborhood. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Understood.
Evening.
I'm also here about the same residence. I recently moved to this residence about two years ago. I'm in the process of trying to update my house to make the curb appeal better. I have had people walk across my driveway. I've had the cars, almost hit cars in my street because they're looking for that address. I've told my wife and my kids, I've actually programmed the sheriff's number into their phone. I said, you see anything, call. I'm done with this. I'm telling you right now, if this, if this is not resolved, everybody comes in, code enforcement comes in, police come in, fire department come in, for two days, you have a black night. They had an incident last Friday. Two nights, we had a black night, and it started back up. A week ago, four people were arrested from that house, public knowledge, substance. Okay? Two days, we had a black night. Then the cars start up. They have signals honking, whatever. I now keep my lights on my exterior on all night. I've installed cameras in my house. And I am going to tell you right now, if this is continues, I've spoken with that resident. He is not the owner. I already know that. I've spoken with him. If this continues, this will become an escalated violence, and I will tell you that right now. He has also made the statement, if you remove him from that house, he is going to burn it down to the ground. So now my question is, do now I have to figure out how to protect my house from somebody that's going to burn it down? Code enforcement, I understand, they have a, they have a difficult job. I don't know what this guy's doing, running a junkyard. I've had people knock on my cars, saying there's somebody in the back of my van taping somebody. It's my work van. Okay? My cars are parked in the driveway. Unless I have something going on in the front yard, then they may be outside on the street for a couple of days. But I'm trying to be respectful to my neighbors, but it's getting to the point that something is going to become an allocation. They have people living in the back of the house, there's shanties. I don't know what goes in and out of that. Junk haulers, if it's a business, it's a residence. Why is a business in a residence? I did not move into this community to have a junk house and a junk dealer two doors down. I did not, did not want to bring my kids into something that is bringing drugs into this house. People come from the prison there. The gentleman that stays there says, oh, well, it's not me. Well, it's the people you associate. It's the people that you allow here. It's the shanties. It's the tents. It's the trailers that you put in the backyard and let these people stay there. Yesterday, had a, I don't know if it's a husband or wife, hitting each other. Called the sheriff. They spoke with my wife. They showed up at the house. Don't know what you're talking about. Nobody's hitting anybody. That's all I have to say. I don't want this to fall through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm also here for the same residence, and I've been Norco resident since the year 2000. Very proud to live in Norco, very proud of our community. And same, same situation. We live there, and probably it has escalated in the last four or five years, but what we've seen, they are, what it looks like is they're operating businesses out of their house. It's makeshift auto repair, so there's cars in their driveway, hoods up. On the street, hoods up. I leave for work pretty early in the morning. I'm usually out the door by 4:30. They're already outside, lights on underneath the hoods, working on the cars, all night long, running a bobcat in their backyard, pushing trash around. We're not detectives, but we can spot shady activity when cars circling. Friday nights, you see it a lot, Saturday nights, more often. There's so many vehicles there at the house that they have to overflow down to our houses. I'm four houses down from this residence and I get cars parked in front of our house also. We try to park in the backyard or the garage. They'll block our mailbox. And so now we'll get notes from the mailman. "Hey, you're blocking the mailbox." And we try to stop them and say, "Hey, just to let you know it isn't our vehicle, it's somebody else's vehicle." And the problem is, the people that park there, they're not residents of the house. And so a lot of their personal belongings are in their cars. So they make their way down the horse trail to their vehicles, 2, 3 in the morning, they're yelling, screaming matches in front of our house, waking our family up. Lot of obscenities yelled very loud from their house. We can hear them clear from our backyard. We have grandkids at our house recovering their ears because they're screaming, fighting. You can hear screams like somebody's getting stabbed. And I think there has been a stabbing or two there before. I couldn't count the times the sheriffs have been there, drug enforcement, parole sweeps, out of hand, just completely out of hand. We've tried to talk to them and they'd say the same thing, "It's not us." Well, it's almost like it's an open invitation for, I don't know where they're coming from, but they all just go there and live there, who knows where. Like I said, last night, or this morning, I left work and there's like a 40-foot extension ladder up in a tree. They're climbing the extension ladder, putting lights up inside the middle of the tree. Just stuff that's bizarre, just crazy stuff. So anyway, we're, we're hoping the same thing doesn't slip by, it's gone on too long. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Alisa Ravaz. I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Mr. Mayor, council members.
Evening.
My name is Janet Alisaradas. We have lived in our home in Norco and it's about the same residence for over 20 years. The community of neighbors that keep up their property and have built a trust between each other is something that is worth volumes to homeowner. We depend on each other to watch out for our property and our lives. We have each other's backs and we have many respectful and responsible neighbors. Unfortunately, there's that one house on our block that has been cause for concern over several years. There are a number of people that live in that home and they, there have been many physical and verbal fights in the front yard. Junk and vehicles left in the front yard for days and months on end. Multiple vehicles parked in front of the home and in front of the neighbors' homes, a trailer and/or a motorhome parked there, with people living in it at times, as well as blocked mailboxes up and down the street. So many of us don't get our mail on occasions. We find cigarette butts in our, front of our homes and recently my husband found hypodermic needles in front of our home. We personally had to call the sheriff a few years ago when one of the residents chased our son's girlfriend down the street to the AMPM and confronted her at the gas station. Of course, he was, he was high and scared her to death. We had to file a police report on that. And we have worried about the safety of our young daughters, wondering when they came home if they were going to be confronted by whoever across the street when they came home. It became necessary for us to feel that we had a contract with ADT to protect our home. And against my personal belief, I have become legally armed because of my fear of what was going on across the street. The constant comings and goings of people 24/7 across the street has become a constant concern for many of us. It is not uncommon for us to see law enforcement across the street, out there with people lined up and handcuffed, waiting to be taken away or having the home searched. This is not good for our property values, but above all, it's not good for us or our neighbors to have to deal with this issue day after day. Our homes need to be places where we feel safe and secure, places where our children are safe and we respect each other's home values and property, places where we can enjoy waving hello to each other and know that we have each other's backs and respect each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jerry Sterns.
Oh, you got it right. Please like Terry. My name is Jerry Sterns and I'm here on behalf of that same address. I live directly across the street at 2970 Norco Drive. I've been living there, as my wife, Deanna, said, for 13, whatever she knows better than me, 14 years. Most of the people are here because of me, because I decided, let's get them together. Just so you know, two weeks from now, I have 32 other residents that are going to come and we're all going to take our three minutes. I understand there's a multi-agency together with you guys. I understand it's going on. We need to get done. Because until then, you better sound, I'm staying here until 12 or 1 o'clock in the morning. Okay? Just so we're clear. I am saying the same thing. This is the front of my house. You see that? Okay? I'm talking about the value of my house. I don't care if I don't get my mail, my wife does. Do you see it? That's the front of my house. Go all the way up Norco Drive. You guys just spent millions of dollars redoing Norco Drive in the last six months. That's what my house looks like, in front of my house. And I am also, like Mike said, going to invest $15,000 in the next 90 days to improve my curb appeal. Unregistered vehicles, vehicles leaking, blocking mailboxes, it's all been said. 10 to 12 people minimum residing in the same residence. I see them come and go. One gets out of prison, two more move in. Two go to prison, two more move out. They must talk in prison. Go to Jason's, excuse me, go to this address. Continue traffic 24/7. I will talk about drug use and I will talk about drug arrests. There was four people that were arrested two weeks ago per my phone call because they were riding a powered lawnmower up and down the horse trails. Two weeks prior to that, this address, which is right next door to them, they knocked down the wall that was built by a 30-year retired Norco fireman. You guys all know him, I'm not saying his name. He built it and knocked it down. They knocked it down, didn't cop to it, and one of the junkies that lives there copped to it three weeks later. It's still not been rebuilt. I know what's going on with the interagency thing, we're here to make sure it happens, get it done. Number, where am I? Blocking the horse trail, riding kind of motorized stuff, complete disregard for the neighbors. We're scared. I have three weapons that are all registered. One of them's by my front door, one of them's by my back door, and one of them's next to my bed. The welding, pounding, per Eric said, they, I couldn't imagine sharing a wall with these people, all hours of the night. Constant physical abuse between each of them. I'm tired of one through eight on my list devaluating my home. Period. I have a realtor that's my best friend and he already told me, if I pulled up to your house right now with one of my clients, he'd be looking around and he'd probably be showing them a different home. So, thank you again, folks. You'll see me in two weeks. Hopefully, we won't have to keep this going and you guys continue what I know you're doing and I, and we appreciate it. We all appreciate it. We've just learned of it recently. We need to get it done. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Jeff Cahan.
Good, Jeff. Good evening. One of the privileges that I have, being a Parks Commissioner, is that I get to serve on the Veterans Memorial Executive Committee. And I get to serve with people like Verney. And Verney's absence is going to be a huge, a huge hole that we need to fill. So I appreciate the city's recognition of Verney's efforts. Speaking of the Veterans Memorial and Verney, Verney would know that in John, Chapter 15, verse 13, it says, "There's no greater love than a man who lays down his life for his friends." And that's exactly what George Ingalls did 50 years ago. April 16th is the 50th anniversary of George giving up his life, throwing himself on the grenade to protect the lives of his fellow soldiers. Now, that happens to be Easter, which I don't think is a coincidence. But we will be celebrating the life of George Ingalls on Easter evening at 6:30 up at the Veterans Memorial. I know you're aware of that. I'm inviting the residents, the citizens of Norco, to join us at the memorial on Easter evening to celebrate that 50th anniversary of George giving up his life. Also, as a Parks Commissioner, we had our commission meeting Monday night and there was just something in one of the reports that I wanted to bring to your attention. Now, this little girl wanted to be anonymous, so I won't mention her name. Instead of having her friends bring her birthday presents to her birthday party, she asked them to please bring items that were on the animal control wish list. And then they turned around and they donated all of those items to our animal control center. That's what this little girl in our town did, selflessly. Instead of asking for presents for herself, she asked for things for animal control. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That stood out. I didn't want that just to be hidden in a, in a report that was received and filed. I wanted you to know and I wanted the citizens to know that there's a little girl out there and she is going to be a great role model. She already is. And I just wanted you to know about that. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
That concludes the comments.
Thank you, Cheryl. Move forward to item 5A, ordinance number 1016, second reading. All we need is a motion.
Council members, Hannah? Grunmeyer? Mash? Mayor Portem Hoffman? Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5B, ordinance 1017, second reading. Once again.
Council members, Hannah? Grunmeyer? Mash? Mayor Portem Hoffman? Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5C, ordinance number 1018, second reading. Second.
Council members, Hannah? Grunmeyer? Mash? Mayor Portem Hoffman? Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5C, ordinance number 1018, second reading. Second.
Council members, Hannah? Grunmeyer? Mash? Mayor Portem Hoffman? Mayor Newton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into item 6, public hearings, item A, approval of memorandum of understanding the Director of Public Works. Chad.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This item is coming out of the governor's legislation that came out in 2014, you know, during the drought period, even though it hasn't been declared over, you know, we still talk about the drought. And at that time, there was several different movements across the state to try to better manage our resources. And one of these measures was looking at all the other groundwater basins that don't currently have management in those basins, i.e. they don't have a, a water master or a cooperative group that seeks to manage the groundwater in, in regards to the quality and the quantity so that it is available in the future. So the part of this legislation what it requires is agencies that are part of groundwater basins that aren't managed to either independently develop a plan of how they're going to help manage a basin that they're part of, or they can form groups to collectively form this plan that has to be submitted to the state. And this is the initial stages of the state's legislation in regards to, and what this proposal is, is to develop an MOU, the agency involved, which involves the City of Norco, Home Gardens, Water District, and the City of Corona. We are all in the Temescal Basin where we pump, for the City of Norco, we pump our wells from, that we actively use for our residents. We have wells that are also in the Chino Basin, but since there's already a defined water master there, no, there's no need to form any, any group. We're already part of that group. So collectively, the three agencies have come together and we wanted to form an MOU, or seek to do an MOU to form this group so we can submit a collective plan that we can, that would be submitted to the state for their review. And basically what this is, it's a, it's a, just an informal understanding amongst ourselves. It's not a JPA where we're asking to have representatives, et cetera. It's more being done at a staff level. The City of Corona has stepped forward and said they will do all the, the legwork in forming this plan that, and the state has guidelines as far as what that information must entail. So the three agencies work together for the City of Norco, basically to provide miscellaneous information regarding our wells, the water quality, water levels, et cetera, past production we may have done. And that will help City of Corona create a baseline information that would be submitted to the state. And we'll, that plan will basically include some assumptions and also findings from us as a group indicating really the condition of our basin and any indicators as far as what we may need to do in the future to manage that basin. And many basins that have high usage, Chino is one of those as an example, they have significant amount of rules and regulations, replenishment requirements, a lot of high fees as far as how to manage, for managing that basin. We're not even in close to those discussions where we may never get there. Ultimately, the state's going to review our information, kind of determine whether or not we're in a, in a, in a type of scenario or situation where they might want us to do more regulation or more monitoring, et cetera. And if it ever got to the point where we felt we need to form a more formal group that had representation and, and more like a board and had any bylaws, et cetera, we would bring that back to this council and to our various groups as far as Home Gardens and Corona to actually form something more formal that has those bylaws because it would obviously involve potential fees and/or any type of penalties that might be associated with it. So this MOU is strictly for purposes of showing the state that we are working together. It is not anything that's going to allow or take any way of our rights and/or be able to assess any penalties in this, in this regard. But it's the necessary step that, that's the minimum level that the state wants to see that we're cooperative working together. So that's pretty much in a nutshell what we're seeking to accomplish with this MOU and how we're going to proceed over the next four or five years in this process as the state reviews potential plans that agencies must do. I'd be happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Any questions to staff? Berwin?
Thanks for taking the time this morning, Chad, to explain some of this to me, but I think this is a great deal for the whole area that everybody's getting involved in it and trying to do something about preserving our groundwater reserves. And appreciate your efforts and everything. Thank you.
Robin?
Just a couple of questions for you. The first one, and these are probably like really minimal questions, but part of the roles and responsibilities talks about meeting regularly to discuss the group. Is this going to, how regularly is regular? It's going to be super time consuming or not really to start with?
No, it won't be. We don't anticipate it being time consuming. Like I said, Corona's going to do most of the legwork. It, regular is pretty much as needed.
Okay.
And it's going to be done at a staff level, so it's not like we're going to be meeting every week. It's, this is going to be a very benign group.
Okay.
Is what I anticipate.
Okay, very good. And I did want to say kudos to getting Corona to do all the paperwork. I saw that in there. So, good job.
Ted.
I was talking to one of the council people from Eastville last night and you kind of answered the question. So we actually belong to two of these right now. The Chino Basin, which already has their own groundwater program.
Mm-hmm.
And now we're on the Temescal Sub Basin.
Right.
Which will include Corona and Home Gardens. Now, the Hidden Valley, I shouldn't say Hidden Valley. Is that also, and I'm looking at the golf course which is down there, do we have any other areas that our city borders on, any other, I mean, like Riverside is, is not in the city there, right?
No, I mean, the, the, the way that this, this is done is it basically is based off of your boundaries, your service boundaries.
Okay.
So, for example, Western Service Boundary actually borders a little bit, it goes into little Temescal, so does the county, but they actually have no customers they serve. So they are not part of this group because they actually don't serve any customers. We get water, for example, from the Arlington Basin, but we don't have a service area in the Arlington Basin, so we don't have to participate in the, in that basin because they're doing the same thing with Western and Riverside. They're going to have to form a group to talk about the groundwater basin in that area. So even though we take water out of the Arlington Basin, it's as a customer of Western.
Okay, all right.
And so that's why we're not participating at this point in, in that particular basin.
Okay, I answered that one. Thank you.
Kevin? No questions, Chad? I know. I lost that bet. Well, okay. Just a, a comment. Last night, it...
I lost that bet.
Well, okay. Just a comment. Last night on the, like, the National Geographic Channel, they had this whole program on California water, and it, a lot of it had to do with the Porterville area where the basins are dry and where they're digging up all the trees and all the residents there have, like, no water out of their tap and all of that. But it was very eye-opening. And then looking at this going, we're not that far away from having very, very serious Not so much a question, but a statement. This is a public hearing? I'll, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
I have no cards on this item.
Go ahead and close the public hearing. Any further questions? Discussion by council?
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Mash, Mayor Protam Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
That motion carries.
6B Site Plan Modification 2015-23. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of, members of the city council. What's before you tonight is two proposed modifications. One is to the approved site plan 2015-23 that approved the shopping center at Corydon and River Road. And then the second is an amendment to conditional use permit 2015-28, which approved a service station within that shopping center. Exhibit A shows the, where the, the service station was approved to be located, which is basically where Sundance Road runs into River Road on, on the, kind of the south corner there. The, when, when it was approved, it was not known who the gas station tenant would be, and city council had expressed that concern that there would be enough room for trucks with horse trailers to maneuver around and get in to be able to get fuel from the pump stations. And we did not have turning radiuses that we could apply to the site plan because we didn't know who it was going to be. So what we did is we, we added a condition to the site plan that required a 35-foot distance between the fuel pump island and the back of the parking spaces in front of the convenience store to make sure that there would be adequate, adequate room for trucks with trailers to get in and out of there. And if you look at Exhibit A, you'll, you'll notice that there are actually two driveways that provide ingress and egress to the gas station pad itself. One coming from inside the shopping center and then one along the extension of Sundance Road. So the condition that was added that required the 35-foot distance, ultimately, it, it was found that the tenant, who was going to be Shell, they wouldn't be able to fit their, their development that they wanted to do with that kind of a restriction. So what they proposed instead, if you look at Exhibit B, is from the main drive aisle coming in from the shopping center, it had the access driving right into a landscape finger that jutted out from the front of the convenience store. So what the applicant is proposing is to eliminate that and eliminate one parking stall next to it to provide a more direct ingress and egress from that driveway to the fuel pump island and then through that, through that island out onto the ingress/egress point along the extension of Sundance Lane. And what you have on Exhibits B and C is kind of a demonstration of, of the movements that could occur by the elimination of that landscape finger and that first parking stall. And then in addition to that, the applicant is proposing to put signs on the canopy, basically showing where trucks or trailers can go through to access the pump stations and where they should not go through because they're going to get jammed up if it's crowded. And in addition, what you receive tonight is an exhibit that we received today that does have the turning radius movements of trucks with trailers going in and around those, those outer two pump lanes or pump, fuel pump lanes. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission, sorry, city council approve the modification to the site plan, which would eliminate that 35-foot requirement from the conditions of approval, and then also approve the modification to the conditional use permit that makes reference to that site plan. And the changes to the conditions that are proposed are basically contained in, in your staff report. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. There are representatives from the applicant and the audience if you have any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Kevin, any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to sort of put it on the record. I really appreciate how Lewis has worked with us, and I personally don't have a problem with this. I really liked how you guys worked your gas station to try to be cognizant of the neighbors and things, and I have yet to get a complaint about construction out there, so I'm, I'm happy with this and I'm good with it. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ted?
Steve, curious, why didn't this go back to the planning commission?
Because it was approved by council. It was approved on appeal by city council, so you're the ones that approved it.
Okay, but I'm just, it, because of a lot of things that the planning commission does, when they do, they make the recommendations. And I'm not trying to throw more work at you or them more work at you, but I, I would, sometimes you almost appreciate what they do and that you get their input into it, and that's why I would rather have seen this go back to planning commission board came up here, just so I have an idea that they were all agreeing. So I, I don't have a problem with it. I just ask why it went through. Thank you.
Robin?
Just a quick question for you, Steve. On condition number 21, it requires the minimum parking spot. By taking the parking spots, they're still going to be okay with their minimum requirements, right?
Yes, they, they have more than the required parking, so they're fine.
Perfect.
Berwin?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. I'm happy that this station's going in over in that area for that neighborhood. I think it'll, people have been asking for a gas station from over there for a long time, so they didn't have to drive over here on Hamner. But I think it'll be a big boon to our tax revenue because of the traffic from Eastville back and forth and the neighborhood over there, and appreciate the developer and everything putting in these islands like they are where people can get in there with their horse trailers, because that's one thing they had asked for, and I appreciate that, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. Couple of little, little questions. I agree with Mayor Protam. I always like to see things go back to planning, even though this isn't much of an item. Along with the parking calculations, by eliminating that, that finger, does that do anything to landscape calculations?
No, they're, in addition to parking, they exceed their landscaping requirement also.
Okay. And then by moving that finger back, there's this note that says about the yard lights, power for yard lights with circle around them to be provided. What, what's a circle around a light?
It's the shield on, on the, on the facility itself.
So this is, the way it reads is like yard lights with circle around them.
Yeah, it's a shield to keep it from glowing out.
On the fixture?
Yes.
Okay. No other relationship, though, as far as?
No.
Okay, just kind of read strange to me. This is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Mayor, I do have one card. I can't read the first name, but I think it's Mr. Reeves.
Pardon?
Two, Reeves.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'd like to thank staff for working with us on this, and we're just basically here to answer any questions with regards to this item or the center in general, because I know we haven't been in front of you for a while, and potentially there's some questions on the shopping center.
Any questions?
Opens in October.
No, you've been behaving yourself, so we're good.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chad.
Thank you.
If, just for, for the residents, if you can update your website so to all the new tenants that were in there that you've got proposed for the?
Puerto Rico, Starbucks, CVS, Staters, Miguel Jr.'s, a vet, a cleaners, and a nail place.
We're always asked, who's coming in there, so?
So we're going ICSE in May, so right before then, on our website, the colored site plans will be updated with the tenant names.
All right, thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
It's the only card on that item.
Thank you, Cheryl. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cheryl?
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Mash, Mayor Protam Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Last item, city council, city manager, staff communications. Kevin?
I have two things. One, I really want to compliment Gina. I, I don't remember if I did this before, but I had had some concerns about billing for seniors, and I was amazed when she called me and told me the lengths they go to to make sure that they actually follow up on, because they're such good payers, if they don't pay, they're late, they actually check up on them. And I was just really, really impressed with that, and I want to make sure that staff knows that I was amazed by that, and that's really fantastic. I'm going to, I don't mean, truly, I don't mean to, to sort of backdoor this, and I meant to send an email today. The Kipps Corner easement, we're next behind the Mugar thing, you know what? That's been going on now. I mean, Berwin, I think, went to that site prior to me getting on council. We need to, I keep hearing how we don't know who owns it. There's some trees there that are really causing problems. The residents really feel like we're not going to help them, and we need to find out about that easement. What are we going to do about the corrals that are in the easement? Are they really in the easement? But more than anything, I'd like to find out, how can we clean that up so that trail can be cleaned up? And can we, I know it'll cost money, but can we go in and trim those people's trees that Edison has butchered? You know what I'm talking about, right, Steve? Can, can we, can we nail that down? I'd really appreciate it, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Ted?
Yeah, you know, for most of you, you know that I'm up at Ingalls Park all the time. I volunteer quite a bit of time up there. But I, I just, I get irritated when I hear that we don't market Ingalls Park and the arenas up there very well. So I like make sure on public record that almost every weekend since January, since January, that place has been booked. Both arenas get booked. There are some weekends, there's four different type of events going on up there time. And kudos, Brian, to Patty Ireland for bringing all those events in there and for the amount of hours and time she spends up there. And not only that, but for the public relations job she does up there for this city and the Parks District. We've had some bad weather, and yet she's up there making sure that the events go correctly and talking to them and getting, the dog show, the four-day dog show is blown out in the wind. They're coming back next year, even though the wind, we don't control the wind, but when it does happen up there, it happens, and they're coming back. So kudos to her, all the relationships. The junior rodeo, we've had, if you don't realize the amount of rodeos we have up there, we always think we just have horse week, and we have the posse rodeo. Junior rodeo, there's been one every month, one every, high school and junior rodeo, national police rodeo is in there. These things are going on, and I, and it's, it's great when I hear the barrel racers say, "We're coming back." National Bear Horse Association. In the last, you know, for most of you don't know, I put the stalls up there. No, I'm not getting paid for it, but I, yeah, well, you want to get, yeah, well, I know. I put 125 up there for Jerry Lindy's barrel racing and team roping. I put 70 for high school rodeo for a weekend and another 70 for the other high school rodeo, plus the national colt. So I just want people to know that this place is booked, and, and Brian and I, I, my hat's off to Patty Ireland for the amount of work and time and dedication she shows and the public relations job she does up there. We don't compensate her enough for what she's doing. I know that, but she does it because she loves the facility. So I just want to make sure that the public knows what good employees we have, because she's rubbing off on her other employees up there to make sure it's no longer, they got what they got. That doesn't happen anymore up there, so kudos to her. Thank you.
Robin?
Well, I have more kudos for Parks and Rec staff. There was something that happened up at Riley's Gym last Wednesday, and the staff at Riley's Gym is, went above and beyond to help out, so kudos and tell them thank you. I really appreciate it. An staff issue, but it was professionally handled, showed the utmost care, and city employees are amazing, 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 so thank you.
Berwin?
Yeah, and I'll piggyback on what Mayor Protam Hoffman was talking about with Patty because I remember for years, I used to beat your head on the desk to try to get more events up there and use those facilities like what they're meant instead of doing it twice a year or renting them for once a month. Since Patty's come on board, things have really turned around, and she works real hard, she's dedicated, she really loves what she's doing, and the people that deal with her really love to deal with her because she's accommodating. She don't, they're no longer told, "Well, you can't have this, or you can't have that. We're not going to do that." And I remember one time before she took it over, when one of your retired employees up here, I put on an event there for the participants, and we were going to go over to the pile of corral panels that were stacked out there by the old barns and get one of them, and the guy wanted to charge me $25 for that little deal, and I was going to move it myself. Well, that no longer happens. Patty is sincere, the volunteers do a great job, and soon as I get released from one more doctor, I'll be back up there when I can helping volunteers work out. But I think that we do have a great bunch of employees, and I think that she, she definitely deserved that employee of the year award that she got this last, last year. But now I'm going to get on another subject and start beating on a dead horse, and I don't like to do that. But these weeds in this town are getting totally out of control. And I understand that people are supposed to take care of their, of their house and everything, but I look at all these intersections when I drive around. And tonight, coming to council, I came all the way down Temescal to Fourth Street. If you look east when you get to that intersection, in a small car, you're not going to be able to see the traffic coming westbound on Fourth until they pull out of the intersection. The weeds are so high, they're covering up the trail fence to your left if you're sitting there facing this way, but that's not the only intersection. And I don't know what we're going to do to get them taken care of. I'm going to come in and talk to Javier again tomorrow about some locations in town that need to be taken care of, but I was reading about a month ago that the city of Albuquerque, New Mexico, they drive around and they find the homeless people. But they don't have a job. Some of them actually want to work, so they pick them up and they take them and they give them a day's work with a fair day's pay and lunch. And I think it's time that we start thinking about some program like that that would help ex-homeless citizens. help ex homeless situations, because I think there'd be people that would want to work, but it would also help the city. But every time that we bring up something like this, all we ever hear about is the liability on it, and that's all I'm going to say, but the weeds need to be taken care of.
Anything else on that?
No, I moved my microphone right here.
Okay.
Before I got mad.
Lieutenant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to address some of the comments that were made earlier about the residents of concern. The Noco Quality of Life Group has been around in existence for, I think we're looking at 18 months, almost two years now. And we have been at that location a number of times, and last week, we went out there in a multi-prong approach. We went out there with fire code enforcement, as well as animal control. And I walked...I didn't walk in the residence, but I went and spoke to a number of people that have basically expressed their concern about that particular neighborhood. But I want everyone to understand that there is something in progress. It just takes time, and we are...we've been looking at it. I've had conversations with the city manager about it, so we are aware of the problem, and we are addressing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council, I got to echo what Berwin just said for a moment, in that we've gotten used to the last five years of drought, not having a grass crop in Southern California, and actually, all of California has a significant grass crop this year. As your fire chief, I would not be doing my job if I didn't tell you I wasn't nervous. We haven't had it. Those fine dead fuels receptive to embers. We're going to have fires. They're going to start in April. May's going to be busy for us, you can see it as you drive down the 15 corridor. It's coming. We've been putting out PSAs in the weekly highlights, in our social media efforts since February, on clearing your property. If you need help, if you need advice, please come to the fire station. We're more than happy to come out and look at your property, give you suggestions. That's pretty much what I got to say about that, but the time is now. The grass is already turning. We need to start mowing and clear.
Thank you, chief. Gina? Brian?
Just to echo the chief, we're starting our weed abatement and spraying now. There's a timing on that, too, so when you cut, then you have to spray. You just can't spray right away, so I know both us and Public Works are starting to mount up for what the rain has brought us, so trust it, we'll be working on those different things.
Thank you, Brian. Steve?
Chad? Two items, again, to respond to Councilman Hannah's comments. Again, we have just started spraying, and we've got a lot of spraying to do, and then we're going to try to follow it up with, again, the court crews and some of our own staff to go through and try to remove what we can from the trails and the parkway areas. But again, as you know, a reminder is that our budget for trail maintenance, which includes any weeds, is $25,000 a year. So, we're going to do what we can, with the resources we can, and again, hopefully, we can get Javier and code enforcement, and maybe get some of the folks that can help clear some of the areas. But there's definitely many, many areas that have that issue, but we have begun that process, and we're going to try to do it as quick as we can. Different topics, CIP project, we have our Cape Seal Project on Sixth Street that is going to be starting on the 27th of this month. It will go for about three and a half weeks, and that encompasses new paving from Sierra all the way up to California. So, it will cause some traffic delays and some headaches as they do the work, go up and down the road to do the work. They're going to go up and down several times, because it's a special process of how they do it, and so...but there are going to be a lot of delineation, a lot of one lane each way for that time period. So, we ask the businesses and residents to be patient. It should be done the week prior to our parade, that I think is at the last week in April. So, I made that a requirement, that if they couldn't be completed, we're not starting the project until after the parade's done. So, they've said, and promised me they would be done well in advance of the parade. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chad. Cheryl? No news from the clerk's office? Thank you. Andy?
Regarding the weeds, in addition to what Parks and Recs is going to be doing, in addition to Public Works, we anticipate that code enforcement will be stepped up. Fortunately for us, as you know, you are tries a part-time employee, to be added to the code enforcement crew, and I'm happy to report that we did get over 25 applications, and a number of them are good applicants. So, we look forward to filling that position fairly soon, and that will provide some relief to Javier with respect to...we anticipate to be a very busy code enforcement season.
Thank you. There's nothing else? We're adjourned.